The meeting to order this Tuesday, May 24th, 2022. On the agenda is the Town of Abingdon's zoning board of appeals will hold a meeting at Town Hall on Tuesday, May 24th at 7:00 PM. Continuing on the petition of limited dividend affiliates of WP East Acquisition regarding Xavier Summer Street, assesses map 24 and 17 lots 112 and 11-11A. I think when we've left, Sean, I think we'll have you make your presentation first on your review letter, the most recent one.
Yeah, well, actually two.
Two, yes, there's the traffic one and the civil one, right?
Am I right staying here?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. So as you mentioned, we have previously issued two review letters, one on traffic and one on civil. Several comments generated some dialogue last time at the meeting. The applicant has gone back, revised their drawings, revised their submittals, really captured, you're very responsive to our comments, very cooperative, captured most of the issues that we identified on both matters, whether it's traffic or civil. I think dealing with civil first, the big change was they took what was a three-building program, consolidated down into two buildings. What that did is freed up a lot of space on site, made some of the old circulation problems go away. Another big change was in response to all the comments of cheap ass and we made was they got rid of most, if not, with the exception of about seven spaces, all the parking at Monahan Crossing has gone away. So that really addressed a lot of our fundamental issues, both in terms of constructability, layout, circulation, a lot of positive changes from that. There were a couple outstanding issues, probably the biggest one was they have a lot of onsite storage for infiltration of ground of stormwater and the requirement in the regulations, in the stormwater standards that require two feet of separation from groundwater. Right now, they only have about a foot and a half. Difference of opinion is the way you consider the bottom of the system. I think we've come to closure on that, that we've got a solution on that, but that's going to be kind of come around in the next evolution of drawings. And then there was probably some other issues. I don't want to make them an issue, but I think it's important for the board to have some documentation from the applicant as to the sufficiency of the public infrastructure to serve the project. So what we usually think is this is a project that because it's bigger than density the zoning typically allows, logically wouldn't have been forecasted as part of any utility design or things like that. So what we like to do is have something on the record that serves as a factual basis for the board to determine that, yeah, even though it's bigger than zoning, the evidence suggests that there's adequate capacity in the system. Right now, they've deferred to the Abington Rockland Water District and to the sewer department. We'd rather have is something from the applicant's engineers laying out what the demand is, laying out what they know about the system and why it should be fine. But aside from that, I think most of the stuff is pretty well addressed. On traffic, similar story. Big change on that was they did all the extra additional monitoring, so they did a lot more traffic counts. So they were dealing with old information that was probably more than three years old. And what we asked them to do, that was pre-COVID, we asked them to just sort of benchmark the current situation. What they found was that there's almost a 66% reduction in the traffic between what they counted several years ago and what they have now. So the net result is, you know, all the analysis that you did is pretty conservative. The only one thing that I thought was left outstanding, what we hoped to have was a little bit more better documentation on the railroad crossing that's right near the Monahan Crossing. And specifically what we wanted was just, again, another professional, qualified professional to look at the crossing, to confirm in writing that it's safe, that it's capable of supporting the project, maybe give a little bit background as to how it operates, how many times a day it operates and where the traffic backs up into the site. So what we've asked for that is for that in return, actually had the opportunity to talk to both the civil engineer and the traffic engineer ahead of the meeting. I think we're all on the same page on that and can look forward to getting these answers as well.
Do you want to go through your points here, the ones that are still kind of outstanding and just?
I mean, a lot of them are frankly sort of kind of boring. I did, I did put the most important ones up front and I sort of alluded to those in the conversation. If you want, let's take the civil letter that was issued on May 16th.
Yeah.
It just hit the bottom of the page, it talks about the stormwater design and the specifics of sort of the difference of opinion there. Again, I think in talking with the applicant's engineer, I think we've worked through that and we can look forward to a revised design that addresses our comments. And then also on there, it's this mention about the water and sewer capacity, again, just to get documentation from the applicant. And then, oh, actually, one more thing.
Is the applicant okay with doing that or is that?
Based on my conversation, I believe so. And again, it's not a heavy lift, it's really just the difference between having nothing and having something. So usually it takes maybe a one-page or a two-page memo to address. If it's more than that, then that means there's probably something that's questionable about the system. Nine times out of 10, there are any issues, so we just get a nice clean letter that documents clearly what the expectations are for demand and then lays out the basis for why the system's adequate to supply.
Yeah, I know when we were doing the one up on the street, you would suggest the same thing at that point.
Right, right. I think that was a little bit more iffy. A bit more robust infrastructure here in this location, so I don't expect even modest issues. But again, it's just a matter of you guys having the factual basis to reach a conclusion as opposed to really just relying on what you hear from others. Actually, one other point I brought up was open space. I think one of the good changes about consolidating from three to two buildings was that it sort of freed up some space. I think the space that they provide now is much more utilitarian than it was before. My thoughts are it's still kind of tight, it's a big site, there's really not much around, and what open space they have is right in the middle of three wings of the building, so it's all buried inside the building. So I think Cliff and I spoke, Cliff being the design reviewer, and we both share the opinion that we should still try to do a little bit about seeing if there's other options for creating more open space.
The number of units did not decrease in this new plan?
Did not, nope. I think the parking might have dropped a little bit, you know, a half dozen spaces or so, still about at a 1.5 per unit parking matrix. You know, that's usually what we typically see, 1.5, I've seen it all the way down to like 1.1. Really becomes sort of a market consideration for the owner. I think since this is a sort of owner occupy and owner-managed building, we tend to put a little bit more sort of credibility to that because they're going to have to live with it. But one and a half is typically what we see for these kind of projects. And given that, we've got MBTA so close by, that's really a unique situation. I've never done a project, you know, literally right next to an MBTA station. So if there was ever a sort of case study for sort of density and you're kind of getting the most out of it, being right next to the MBTA station certainly pushes that in the project's favor.
Do you have any idea on the wetlands issues, if conservation has finished there?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they've applied for an ANRAD. So what an ANRAD is, it's called an abbreviated notice of resource area delineation. It's basically a submittal that says, let's all agree on the wetland line, wetland boundary. And if you recall in one of my prior letters, and in this one, that still is an open item. Amy's asked us to take a look at the wetlands. I spoke with Phil, asked the status of things. Conservation Commission has hired a review consultant to review the wetland line. Our approach is going to be to wait till that review came in, review what their commission's review consultant determined, see if we agree with it. If we agree with it, we report back that you can rely on that review consultant's determination. If we didn't, we provide some more input. But for now, we don't really want to add a third person to the discussion if we can avoid it, when from what we understand, the CONCOM's reviewers are a pretty competent group, so we would expect to get a legitimate review of their wetland line.
Anybody else have any questions on the civil?
I have a question related to snow removal.
Okay.
I was thinking about this a little bit now. Is it correct, my understanding, that MBTA is responsible for snow plowing on Monahan Crossing, is that?
That's my understanding.
And how does that relate to placement of the snow after it's plowed out of the way? Because it just seems like they're currently plowing through an occupied piece of land and snow probably go to the side.
Yep.
But in a very heavily occupied piece of land, which will occur if this project goes forward, you know, where does the snow go and is there any chance we might want to talk to the town about taking over that plowing responsibility? Because I don't know if the MBTA would have place to put it.
Yeah, I think from the point of that's an agreement between the MBTA and the landowner, the landowner being the applicant.
Okay.
So you don't have any, the applicant still has obligations. If they don't comply with your decision, it's their job to make sure the snow gets removed and make sure. If they have MBTA do it, right, MBTA still needs to comply with whatever conditions you make. If they don't, then it's still their problem, right? One good thing about getting rid of all that parking on Monahan Crossing is really nothing came back in its place except open space areas. So, I mean, there's hardly any at the beginning, so it's not like, oh, great, they have all this open space now. Now they at least have a place to plow snow into during normal operations without sort of burdening parking spaces or creating access issues for the fire department. So I think they've created the space to continue the maintenance of Monahan Crossing reasonably. They also have some pretty robust spaces for other stories, so I think, you know, we're comfortable that the, it's at least in the manageable side of things now as opposed to just pie in the sky. But I think that all the changes have been sort of positively helpful in that.
Has there been any communication between the project and MBTA about it or is that something we'll find out later? It's their responsibility, I understand that.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm sure they can.
Yeah, just to point to that, so we are not the current landowner, that agreement is with the current landowner, which is not us, so, you know, what that agreement looks like going forward, you know, we're not the current one, but what the current one is and where the MBTA puts that snow in, in their lot, but that's something that we'll work through as we acquire the site.
As long as we can impose that responsibility on you, right?
Well, only if they take responsibility far.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
I mean, remember, Monahan Crossing is part of the assemblage associated with this project, so it's not a public way, it's part of this project acreage. It just, there's an access agreement through it for MBTA.
Okay.
Two questions. One is, with the traffic pattern, with the street, on-street pattern removed, is the fire department now adequately have placement of, if, accessibility?
We're going to hopefully talk about that in greater detail in a minute.
Thank you very much. My second question was going back to your conversation regarding the onsite stormwater versus the groundwater and the closeness or non-closeness, how is that rectified? How do we, who makes that final determination? Is this something that we will do or is that something you come to an agreement on? Or how is that, if there's an issue regarding the closeness of stormwater to groundwater, how do we rectify that and who does that rectification?
Currently, just to sort of brief people on what the issue is, stormwater guidelines require a minimum two feet of separation between the bottom of an infiltration system and the estimated seasonal high groundwater. The infiltration system is a series of precast concrete cells underlaid by six inches of stone, wrapped in a geotextile fabric. So the system is this envelope of fabric with some stone around it with some cells that create volume inside it. The current design contemplates the bottom of the system as the bottom of the concrete, not the bottom of the stone, so that's about six inches. And it's designed so that there's just barely two feet from the bottom of the concrete to the groundwater. Our position is the bottom of the system is really the bottom of the stone. So that puts the bottom of the system, where the water gets into the ground is at the bottom of stone, so their current design doesn't comply with that. Phil and I have spoken, pushed back, tried to convince me otherwise, but I think he saw, he saw that it was probably, when I said, well, I'm never going to recommend that that's acceptable for the board, so you can take it as you want. He came back and I think the intent now, and he can speak to it, is to figure out a solution. Really, it's just about creating six more inches of separation. It might mean a little bit more grading, a little bit more fill, but it's a solvable issue.
Yeah, I'll chime in, Phil Quodaro from Allen and Major, just to echo that, that is a conversation we had and it really was a discrepancy as to where we counted that two feet. And Sean painted the picture perfectly, so we've agreed that we can modify the drainage to accommodate the request, to be, to be less out of the box, if you will, to work within the mold of what is expected for the drainage rather than have to convince your consultant and you that what we've done is good, will act as to the six inches.
Okay.
And just to, part of the issue is that the systems are so big, so if this was a real small system out in the corner with a little lot, we'd be less inclined to push it as an issue. But in this case, there's a lot of footprint out there and there's a lot of infiltration. So given that we're relying on it so much as the means of handling the stormwater, we felt it was pretty important to hold the line on that.
Okay. At the end of the meeting, if you could just meet with me for a minute, I'd like to just go over the plan to review the site of where this cells or where these cells are being stored on the property. That's all right with you?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Are we going to see it today or do?
We do have the overall plan, we're happy to bring it up, we can talk about the specifics.
Are you asking about the revised design of the stormwater system? Is that what you're asking if we're going to see it today?
What are we going to see today? Are we going to see the new drawings of the new building, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's good, thank you very much.
But we can still discuss.
I just like a view of how I interpret the plan and what I'm looking at, that's all. Thank you, I'm good.
Anybody else? So I'm going to open up to the floor at this point.
If you don't mind, we can, so since the last meeting, Ian, we did meet in person with a couple of the site architects over the, really specifically the apparatus turning radius concerns, because as you said, this is a very tight site, as we all know. Most of our concerns were really addressed, you know, so your following, meeting went down with our concerns in the last meeting. However, since that meeting, Captain Caudy, and I'm going to defer to him in a moment because he has more detail on this than me, he attended a seminar at the Department of Fire Service with a code compliance officer, and this was brought up. And they, one of the issues we have is the turning radius in a couple of places around the project requires our apparatus to go into the opposing lane to make that turn. It is of the opinion, if not the law, and I'll let you speak on this in a moment, Cap, from the Department of Fire Service code compliance officer, that is absolutely unacceptable, period. Can you, if I can defer to Captain Caudy on that?
So 527 CMB, Chapter 18 defines our site access. That's where we get our rules and regulations. Within that, it states the use of the opposite travel lane is prohibited in the design of all new fire apparatus access roads. That was brought up, asked him about that. The problem is that as soon as we go into an opposing lane, we assume all liability. Same thing with us driving, any type of response, as soon as we run out of the lane, it's our responsibility if anything's damaged on another vehicle. So the state fire marshal's office was pretty unequivocal that, no, it's not allowed in-site design. The only real place that we had that was on the Summer Street side of Monahan's Crossing, making that first right-hand turn into the parking lot. We spoke with the engineers, there was talk of increasing the turning radius and making some of the squats, some impact cars. We haven't seen an updated plan for that. Our other concern too was on the backside, the MBTA side of Monahan's Crossing. Quick question, what's the depth of the parking spaces on this land?
They're 18 feet.
18 feet. So one of our big concerns on the backside, if you look to the MBTA side, drawings, you can see the front bumper of our truck is going just the very edge of the parking spots, both there and at garage A, we make those swings. 18 feet, I looked up a normal Chevy Silverado 1500 that, you see all of the roads, those are over 19 to 20 feet long. So that's if the person pulls all the way in the spot, there's a good chance it could be hanging over, that kind of restricts some of our space, so there is a concern of those turning radius diagrams on those. There was also some concern down on the bottom of building B at garage C, again, just super tight. The diagram has to go all the way to the garages and it's taking up a lot of space, so again, 100%, blue sky day, car is parked perfectly, our operator's driving perfectly, it'll fit. You throw one car or some snow banks in, then we may have issues getting around the backside of that building. So we talked about it, we just haven't seen the revised plans on those discussions.
Now, assuming the liability, now if we're driving down Route 18 and if we have to go in the opposing lane to light society law to avoid traffic, that's, we're doing what we have to obviously based on it. With this plan, we have no choice. That's the difference, that's a critical difference. As soon as I found out about this, it was actually that day I did notify, did you receive an email on that?
We did, I did.
As soon as we found out about that, hopefully that was shared with everybody to give everybody ample time on that. So that's our concern and question is, you know, that's going to have to be addressed and we're going to have to see a revised apparatus turning plan.
We did not see any on the board. And if I could add on that, so this is, this is always a point of discussion. Traditionally, it comes down to the fire chief being comfortable with each individual application, each individual turn, to make sure that it's within his comfort zone. The challenge you have is if you prescribe all the geometry at every location, you end up creating massive curb radii and big crossings for pedestrians. So there's a, there's a give and take there. And historically, it just really comes down to the chief being comfortable with what he sees. Now, I understand that the AHJ, the authority of jurisdiction, has the right to say anything, do anything, ask whatever they want. So there is latitude within the regulations for him to accept things, but to his point, you know, if it's a liability that he's concerned about, then my recommendation would be you really, you really got to make them comfortable with every situation. And we're happy to act as a sort of an impartial informer, but what we see is that if you hold the letter of law and all these, don't go into the opposite lane for a right to a right, you end up with these massive radii, 30-foot radii, that just make these, these miles of these openings really, really, really big. And the pedestrian crossings sometimes end up being twice as long. And then, as you can imagine, if you give people a lot of space to drive their car in, they're going to randomly use that space. So the question becomes is how much do you, how much do you give in each direction? So that's why we usually try to sort of broker a solution that's acceptable to everybody.
If I could respond to that, I'm not comfortable with this, and I'm not saying this just to try to, for a monkey reason, this, I mean, and that's based on, this site is already tight and there's already concerns over snow. And in a perfect world, as the captain said, if everybody's parking perfectly like that in a blue sky day, without snow, without these big SUVs with the tail hooks on them, as well as our practical experience, we have at a couple other brand-new sites in town that everything met the plan, it was all, we cannot get our apparatus through there. I'm not going to mention where this is, we've got a brand-new development in this town, we cannot maneuver there whatsoever. One, you park a Prius in the wrong place, you can't get the ambulance through. This is a major concern and this needs to be addressed on paper prior to anything being built, so I am not comfortable with this.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't, I'm not recommending, it needs to, you need to be comfortable.
Yeah, this needs to be done right now because we're going to be, the town is going to be stuck with this for the next, you know, 100 years, and if we don't get this right now, I don't want another location like some of the other brand-new ones that we have that we're already having major issues with, and there's no easy fix at that point.
Yeah, so I think you're right, that's, Sean, you have to be comfortable with what is being proposed, so I don't know how you would work that out if it's you and Sean with the proponents or?
Well, I think the applicant needs to take back the information the chief has just given us, make their decisions on what's the best they can do, and then we'll collectively review it and see how far we have to go to make it chief comfortable.
I think it really comes down to a revised apparatus turning plan that works without crossing over, and really just enough room to maneuver. And we'll work with you with it, obviously, we've already had before, but, and I know that you don't have a lot of room to work on it, that's not our problem, but that's something you guys need to figure out to increase that room width, those turning radius somehow to make it, make it work.
Anybody else here from the public who wants to ask any questions or comments? Name and address, please.
Range coming for 58 Summer Street. I just had read the peer review responses, so there's just a couple of general ones. One, it wasn't clear about the water department's decision in terms of providing water to this development because it sounded as if they would be, but I've heard differently from the department.
So that was one of our outstanding comments, is that we need to close that discussion and?
So Sean has suggested we get something from the water department in writing, saying that there isn't enough water to service that.
So if there isn't though, the alternative would be digging wells there.
I don't, I don't, I don't see that as a, as a possible eventuality, yeah.
Well, I mean, given the water issues there, it doesn't seem like a good possibility.
No, I don't see there's any situation whereby the public water system can't either be, isn't either sufficient to serve the project or can't be upgraded so that it is.
But that's going to be, that's going to be up to the water department, right?
Right, and I spoke to the water department and I was given a different bit of information. Second question is, there's a, there's a whole bunch of stuff about 10-year, 20-year floods, but we've been living through the last 20 years in 100-year surprise floods. So I'm surprised, it doesn't seem to be, there's a, there's something about seasonal high water table, but it's not clear what that is. But then there's the concern, we're planning for the unexpected 10-year flood, but we're obviously throughout the country not just experiencing 10-year floods.
Right, right.
So it doesn't seem to me to be taking into account enough possibilities.
Well, there's a very regimented means by which we evaluate stormwater impacts. So there are, there's a thing called the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook, which is a, a volume that's this thick, which its exclusive intent is to, is to define standards and define metrics for managing stormwater. And in that document, you're required to look at what's called the two-year storm, the 10-year storm and the 100-year storm. Now, these are, these aren't real events, they're just statistical events that we engineers come up with to normalize analysis. So if anybody ever says that was a 100-year storm, they're just making it up. It was a big storm, right? So the 100-year storm is just a statistical event that we run through analysis to determine how things work, both pre and post-development. So the applicant has done all the analysis according to all the standards that are required, and they've demonstrated that their design reduces peak runoff for the two, the 10 and the 100-year events and meets all those standards, with the exception of the separation from groundwater. The estimated seasonal high groundwater, which you refer to, is, it's a depth in the ground, so when you dig a hole, and there's a methodology, a very strict methodology for how you determine where estimated seasonal high groundwater is, it's usually based on what's called soil monitoring.
So is that based on what, is that in the site or the surrounding area?
It's based on, there's a requirement that for each infiltration system for which the estimated seasonal high groundwater matters, you have to dig a test pit within the, within the footprint of that system to document what estimated seasonal high groundwater is at that specific location.
Okay, and then when you're talking about the stormwater controls, it didn't seem to be clear where the east stormwater would be diverted on the eastern side of the development because I, where I live is on the eastern side.
Is that progress streets, no, that's the railroad track side, right? North is MBTA station.
North is MBTA, east is tracks. West is?
So one of, one of the comments that we made was that we believe there's a source of off-site runoff that comes from the railroad track that has yet to be addressed in the stormwater design. So that, that's something they need to look at as well. Was there something in particular that you were concerned about or?
Just in terms of the surrounding area, particularly the area where I live on Summer Street to the east of that site. So it's not clear where this water, I understand the theory, but it isn't completely clear whether the surrounding area can handle all of this stormwater runoff.
So just to clarify, where the stormwater goes is there's a, there's a drain line, a storm sewer line that runs along the north side of Summer Street. All of their project currently drains to that storm drain line.
Okay, have they taken a look at the Melvern stormwater drain that was put in incorrectly evidently years ago, so that they dug a ditch behind the stormwater drain that goes behind the properties on Summer Street and dumps into the pond?
Yeah, that I don't, that's a little bit too remote for me.
So the question is, if you plug up where it's coming from, then all that water that's been diverted from the top then all that water that's been diverted from the top of Route 58 down Melvern Road, behind the houses that were built, that's going into the pond, if you plug it up, it's going to back up and it's going to flood our backyards.
Nothing they should do should plug anything up. And that's what we're here to make sure is that their design, make sure that their design doesn't impact the downstream system.
So it would be helpful if somebody took a look at that.
Sure.
For years, it was dug out by the town and then they stopped digging it out.
So can you just try and describe this ditch so I can?
So if you go down Melvern Road and as you go around the curve, there is a ditch. So it's behind the road and it flows behind all of the houses on Summer Street up to the pond.
When you say the pond, which pond?
The big one.
The one of the two, the pond on site or another pond somewhere else?
The huge pond on Summer Street that's at the, to the right of Montague and Crossing.
Okay, all right, good, yeah. So all that flow comes downhill and ends up going into that first pond, Montague and Crossing. Then it goes underneath Montague and Crossing in a pipe and then down the street. Okay. And your concern is that if they do anything that raises the elevation of the water table or the water in that pond, it potentially can back up and create an issue up at Melvern. All right, we'll make sure we look at that.
Okay, I appreciate that. And the last question is, what happens if, when you're digging up the construction site after the whole decision is made about the wetlands, that you suddenly discover unexpected springs or underground water?
Well, that, that's part of the reason why we do the test pits at all the infiltration system locations. So we're not surprised by what the underground conditions are. The nice thing about doing what we call test pits and soil evaluations is the ground tells a story. So if you look at the colors of the soils and the types of soils, you can tell where, where the groundwater has gone over the course of time. And that's, that's a nice thing about doing test pits. So we have a really good indicator and a really high level of confidence that when we do these test pits, we actually have a good sense as to what's happening under the ground. So we shouldn't encounter those kinds of situations.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Anybody else? Yep, Pam, just name an address, please.
Pam, 149 Walnut Street. I was a little confused with the water situation because the last water department meeting that we went to, they were saying that the water situation in Abington is dire, like without strict conservation of water. We're going to drink out of water in, you know, three or five years. They are supposed to be opening up like the well on Myers Ave, which is going to give us some more water. But they basically said, this is a dire situation for us. And they weren't even, you know, talking about approving, you know, more projects. And they were just, you know, talking about like what conservation means would be taking place if something was approved or going for approval, you know, to try to help out with the water situation. Because we can't make more water, you know, it's, when it's gone, it's gone. So.
That's part of the reason why we want to make sure we have that on record. Now, what I will say is, just be a bit careful with these matters because there's two issues. There's, when you run a public water supply, there's an ability to produce water and there's a permitted allowance for how much water you can use. So the water company will go out and install wells or do surface water supplies and they have a means of producing water. Regardless of how much water they can produce, DEP will only give them a permit based on how much water they think the community should be using. So if you have a thousand residents in your community and can make a million gallons of water a day, DEP is not going to let you use a million gallons of water a day. They're going to give you a permit number that is basically a function of how many people live in your town and how many people are served from that water supply.
Do you have any idea what happens to this?
I don't. So one of the things we look for is some update as, as to the status of where Abington sits on their Water Management Act permit. I reviewed a 40B project in Dover and they're notorious for going over their permit number because people have big lawns, they irrigate. So everybody's under the misconception that they don't have enough water. They have enough water, just DEP is not letting them have it because they perceive that as being wasteful. So DEP is going to want to make sure that towns only use the water that they need to use as opposed to using the water that they can produce. Because what happens is when you take water out of your aquifer, you're making it harder for other people to take water out of their aquifers or it all has a sort of a, it's all interconnected.
Yes, chief?
Could I ask you a question? Is there reverse to that? Meaning, what if the town, the community requires more water than they're able to produce? Is there a reverse effect to that?
In what way?
Like, we don't have enough water to serve the community as it is now.
So, but is it based on the ability to produce the water or is it based on how much water you're using relative to your permit? Your allotted withdrawal permit?
I don't know.
So that's, that's what I'm saying. There's a distinction. There's, sometimes communities can, like for example, people always reference the, oh, I can't water my lawn, I can't do this. It's a stage one water, water ban. That's, when you see those terms, those are terms required by their Water Management Act permit. So if you use more than 65 gallons a day per person in the town, DEP requires the water company to take those measures. Regardless of what's going on with their ability to produce water, they may be flushed with water, but DEP is not going to let you do it because in their mind, you're only supposed to use the water that you need.
So these things have been perpetual for a number of years.
Almost every community is like that. Because we just, unfortunately, water is relatively cheap. So people, it's very hard to get people to be disciplined and to stay under those numbers. Some communities, it's harder than others. And I don't, I don't know of a town that's, that's on a public water supply that doesn't have water bans all summer long.
Anybody else? Ron?
I have a couple of questions.
Name an, name an address.
149 Walnut Street. You mentioned they did additional traffic studies or whatever? Did they do like new counts or?
Yeah, actually, they, there's new counts that they did, yeah. They did it at all the intersections and all the roads that we asked them to do.
All right. I mean, you said they found like 66% less. I imagine some of that is probably, you know, from the post-COVID people working at home. But did they take into account that Summer Street, pretty much most of the length of it was under construction last year? It has not been repaved yet. So people are still avoiding.
Yes, I agree.
I'm sure, I'm sure that figured into it. What we had wanted to see was to make sure that we had a real data point, a current data point that could validate the information that they used. So we weren't so concerned with getting exactly right as much as getting proof that what they used was either conservative or accurate. So what we found is that quite a bit more traffic was in their analysis than was currently conditioned. For example, if we found out that the numbers were exactly the same and we knew that condition exists, we'd call timeout and say, all right, maybe we need to look at this again because there's probably more traffic than you're thinking.
And was Center Street involved in that new study?
It was, yeah. And the other thing too, I think about too, is COVID's done a couple of things. It's, it's taking traffic off the road and it's also stretched people's sort of use of the road. So it used to be, it used to be that like peak hour, the term peak hour. We look at what's the worst hour in the day, in the morning, and the worst hour of the day in the evening. Because that's when all the problems happen, right? If you're, if you're driving out for lunch, usually you don't run into traffic too much. But what's happening is instead of people all going to work at eight o'clock, right? Now some are going to work at 7:30, some are going to work at 9:30. We've seen a stretching of that sort of peak hour. So when you're looking at just peak hour volumes, now you're, you've got, COVID has knocked some of the people down. It's also stretched out the hours that people are using to go to and from work.
Now, did you see any difference in the, in Center Street from past, any higher?
Admittedly, I didn't look that deep into the data, so I'd probably.
Because people could be avoiding Summer Street. And I mean, I looked at this the other day and it was, it seemed like two minutes to get down that road. Not used in Summer Street.
Could, could be. I, again, I didn't go into the hard numbers. I just looked at the gross numbers and made sure that the assumptions that were.
I'm just wondering if Center Street is being used more than Summer right now.
I'm happy to, this name. Kevin Daniel, Principal of TEC. Liz Altman had presented for our firm at the last meeting. The recent data collection was important to show that, as Shaun mentioned, that it's lower than what was established in the pre-COVID time period. And I agree with everything he said. I think it's important to also understand that apart from the general traffic conditions with community patterns and the like, there are fewer people today using the community rail system than there were pre-COVID, obviously. So the analysis that our firm had done, still relied and was confirmed within our recent response to comments, was that we're still holding that higher level of traffic for all the analysis that we did. The new counts were helpful, at least to provide a snapshot of time for what it's like now. But we still are relying on the results with the higher pre-COVID data just to be responsible, to make sure that it's a conservative assumption.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yep, go ahead, Ron.
Yes, just another comment anyways. Going on, the chief's comments about not having enough room to get around the building or whatever. And, you know, he's still saying that, you know, it's still pretty tight in that area. I mean, I would imagine the number of units they came up with for this is, you know, they probably consulted with some architects and some engineers and came up with the highest number of units they could have to make it as profitable as possible. I was just wondering is there another figure they could come up with? Because I mean, they've changed the buildings around, but they're still keeping the same number of units. I mean, to ensure they could find a way to come up with another number that's lower, but still profitable for them. You know, as a board, they can actually ask them to make the project smaller. You can't tell them to say, you know, you can't say no to the project because they can come back and just give us that same-sized project and that's sad, you know, after going to the state. But if we ask for a lower number, I mean, do they just have to prove that, you know, the number we requested the lowest found is unprofitable for them?
Amy, do you want to address that or?
Sure. So Amy Questel, Town Council. So as a 40B project, they are allowed to make 20% profit. And so, you know, they've done the numbers. We have not actually asked them to reduce the units yet. If we say that the fire chief and Captain Cotty can't get their apparatus around, you know, certain areas without going into the, I can't remember, did you call it the opposite lane or?
Opposing.
Opposing lane, that's it. The opposing lane, then, you know, they're not going to be satisfied with this plan. So clearly, they have to do something to make sure that the apparatus does not get into the opposing lane. However, they do that, you know, they do that. Whether it's reduction of units or not is not necessarily up to us. That is, it's a plan change for them that they have to make. If they're only, if the only way they can make that plan change is to reduce units, I think that we have, in our, on our side, we have a health and safety issue on our side. So we do have a very good reason to ask them to make some plan changes at this point. And I think that, you know, both the chief and the captain did lay it out pretty well that here's the reason why. They gave us the CMR, they went to this, they spoke with this fire person. I wrote it down. Code compliance officer. I wrote it down. Even if my glasses on.
He's had a lot of plans for us.
Yeah, so.
No, no, it was just.
State law.
It's just, it's state law, it's right out of the CMR. I mean, that's related, it's straight out of Chapter 18.
Right. And so that directly goes to health and safety.
And I do remember.
Which is a local concern.
I do remember the chairman mentioning that the project is crowded.
Well, I think it was actually Shaun's words, which is a 10 pounds of potato in a five-pound sack, which hasn't, in my opinion, hasn't changed that much. That's my opinion, but, yeah, as far as the unit numbers, so.
But that gentleman's very respected in our department, to just let you know, because we use him a lot. Since our five-person officer has, has left, our new five-person officer has been going, calling him in and going to classes and stuff too. So he knows his stuff.
Yes.
He's all around town, all around the state.
I had a couple of questions on some of your comments in that civil letters.
Sure.
Progress, the Progress Street neighbors, is Phil going to be coming in on that side of the project? Is that correct?
There is.
So is drainage, is drainage an issue? I know it was, you were somewhat concerned of drainage coming from the Progress Street property onto the project. What about now if you're bringing Phil in? What kind of an impact is that going to have on the neighbors?
You know, there's still a pretty robust sort of offset from the Progress Street neighbors along that side. So of all the places on site where there's actually room, between the parking, behind the second building and Progress Street, there's actually a pretty robust area where they can store snow and there's probably 30 feet anyway between the parking and the property line. Our concern was never that any of the drainage from the site would end up on somebody else's property. That's, that's, that's no-brainer. What frequently gets missed is when engineers are designing stormwater systems, they look at their site and forget that there's water that's coming from other places onto their site. So we need to make sure that whatever they design is conscious of that water. Originally, we didn't know how much of Progress Street came. So all the houses that border the project on Progress Street, it looked like a lot of that water came across their sites and onto the subject property. They've done a little bit more analysis, extended their survey and quantified that area a little bit better. So we think we have that under control.
So even with them bringing in additional Phil, that's not going to affect the Progress Street neighbors as far as drainage going?
Correct, correct. Because their principal means of stormwater control are capture all the stormwater from the site, you know, the parking, the roofs, taking these underground infiltration systems. They're much lower in, they're two feet from the groundwater or a foot and a half from the groundwater. So where that water is interfacing with, with the natural environment from the site is at a much lower elevation. So they're, you know, I wouldn't expect any runoff impacts on a buddy property. So we're, we're pretty, pretty focused on that.
Anybody else?
We do have people on the.
Yes.
Cliff, we need to hear from Cliff.
Yeah, we need to hear from Cliff, yeah. Cliff, can you hear us?
Can hear you. Hello.
Hi, how are you?
I can't see you, but I can hear you. Can you see me?
We can see and hear you.
Oh, okay. Anyway, I'm Cliff Bomer and thank you for asking me to participate in this peer review. I did submit a report about a week or so ago and it's based on review of the latest drawings of two buildings versus three buildings. And it's something like seven pages. I'm not going to read it to you. I'm sure you've all read it.
Cliff, can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
We're going to let the proponents.
Yeah, I actually think, Mark, that's a good idea.
Let them present their plan and then you can make your comments after that, okay?
A few members have seen it.
Sorry, can't see it. So, you want, can we fix this?
Great. This is the same plan that was submitted.
Correct, yes.
This is not, it's not just new.
Oh, okay.
It's the same plan that was submitted.
We want to walk through the changes. It's been submitted, but we can outline the changes.
So this is the April plan.
Can I get one of those?
Okay.
Do you have an actual?
I do.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
For the public's benefit, we were hoping to be in the other room before we could put it on the screen. But it looks like this room doesn't have that capability.
Who's making the presentation?
I'm going to be presenting, Mark Sec with the Appoint WPEs Acquisitions LLC. I know those that may be watching at home or those in the public. And you have seen. So this is the new plan and I know members of the public, everyone on the board, you can see the original site plan. So I apologize to those who can't see the older site plan. But the big changes, as Shaun kind of alluded to, was this was originally two buildings. We originally had three buildings on site. One on the westerly portion of Montague and Crossing and two on the eastern portion. eastern portion. We've since combined this into one building, which has allowed us to kind of distribute the parking and, you know, what we believe to be better access and flow throughout the project. We have removed the parking, as identified at the recommendation of the fire chief, and the peer review of the parking on Monahan Crossing. We do have these, I believe it's six spaces, which will be for visitor parking. There is a handicap accessible space as well as for Amazon package delivery, but it is set off of Monahan Crossing, it's not in the trouble. Other big changes that we thought really helped out the site plan was moving the garage bays to better buffer the train station, the train tracks, the detain tracks. You remember, they were kind of scattered throughout the project, as well as there was a pod that had tandem double bay parking garages that Captain Knott had some concerns with, so we removed those that lead into his concerns there as well.
Did you increase garage spots? Leave them the same or decrease?
We have increased the amount of private garages, yes. The parking ratio, it is still north of a 1.5, which we believe is needed at this location, given that it is on the commuter rail, but that it is still a suburban location and most residents will have a vehicle. Another big thing to point out was we had an exterior trash enclosure on the site, and we've since moved that into the building, so now residents will not have, in this main building, residents will not have to go outside, they can simply, there'll be a trash chute and a trash room with a trash factor, that'll get picked up.
What about the other building?
The other building will still utilize an exterior trash.
Is that going to be sprinkled all the vents and everything?
It's an open.
Oh, it's going to be open?
Yeah. It'll have, it'll be open air, but it'll have a cover.
Okay.
And then, just from some of the other comments from the peer reviewer, we do have an internal bike room with fixed stations for the residents that will accommodate sufficient bike storage. We do tend to notice that a lot of our properties, though, especially those with higher-end bikes, they like to keep it in their unit, but there will be that for residents, and we've added bike, external bike racks for visitors that may come by bicycle. So, those are really the two highlights, and as has been alluded to me now, the two westerly-facing courtyards in the one E-shaped building. So, happy to answer any questions with the new plan.
Anybody have any questions on the board?
Just kind of curious, the chief mentioned earlier, just continue working on the turning radius into the building off of, into the property off of Summer Street. Seems like you'd have a drainage issue if you tried to expand the driveway area just to the, what is it, east of Monahan Crossing on?
This way?
Yeah, on the east side, but on, towards Summer Street, if you, if you try to make a bigger turning radius to get in there.
Are you sure the.
Is that going to cause an impact on the drainage on that site? Because you have the pond along the road.
If I may.
Yes.
From Alan and Major, I just wanted to make sure I understand the question. So, the concern is if we made modifications through here, whether it would affect this pond?
Right.
So, that would be a solid no. This pond is not altered, it's part of the drainage patterns that Sean had alluded to and the abudis had raised commentary, that there is drainage that comes down Summer Street that runs through this pond and ultimately connects through. We're not altering that at all.
Well, you are altering it because you're adding replication.
We are, we are adding replication around the perimeter of it, but we're not altering any of the storage, the availability of water, storage levels, outlets, nothing to do with that. That's all municipal drainage that is staying as it is today.
When he was talking about increasing the turning radius going into the site, turning right as you come off of Summer Street, right, yeah, right there, is that, you know, you'd still stay away from all that stuff?
Yes.
If I can have the captain just point out what really.
Why don't we have the captain show you?
Thank you.
So, about concerns, we're swinging here, so a brittle swing, swamp path analysis has coming into the other lane to swing upright. We spoke to the engineers, we talked about shrinking these spots here to compact car sizes.
You stood up to the left with the camera. Just so we know what you're looking to do.
So, we were looking at this space here, some of the concerns we have is swinging into southern lane. If vehicles are exiting as we're trying to swing in, we have our lights on, sirens going, people usually stop, they're not going to give us any room. So, we talked about either taking a space from there or making those compact car sizes.
We made these all compact, so we have six.
And we just haven't seen the new vehicle swap path analysis for that yet, so that may solve that issue, we just don't know yet.
I was saying how far that 30-foot radius would extend into, what you're showing on this is being green or into the pond area, but it doesn't sound like it'll.
We were talking about opening up more to this side.
Okay.
More to the north, so that hopefully saw it. The other issue we had was when we swing, all this is with our tower truck, our tower truck has a larger swing area, so that's where we're using to compute all of it. This swinging in here, our front bumper is almost crossing over this parking space here, and we make the right-hand swing near garage A, we're also coming up very close to these parking spaces here. We also talked, we had concerns, some of the plantings, the trees, you know, that's, we're trying to make the swing in here branches and stuff like that, we have some concerns with. And then, the front of the building, too, the plantings, I think that's down the line, just taking up the front of the building for space.
Cap, have you, have you seen this plan for, this one right here with the garages?
Yes.
So, those turn radius, do they work?
They do work.
With those garages?
Yes, and when we swing up, I can show you the vehicle swap path analysis we have for the original ones. When we come up, we do, our front bumper touches these front spots, but we do clear the garages. It's tight, it's real tight.
So, now, when you say you touch those, is that in a best-case scenario, like you wind it up exactly perfect, every car is exactly all the way into the spot, there's no one sticking out or?
Correct, there's no snow banks, no something else, there's no large vehicle in there. Like I said, so these lines are 18 feet, a full-size pickup truck, maybe a full-size, like a half-time pickup truck, looking 19 to 20 feet.
Snow there.
A crew cab with a short body, maybe a lawn bed or like a 2500, that's.
What kind of space would you guys need to feel more comfortable, where it wouldn't be perfect, that you had to make the perfect swing or the perfect car had to be parked there, like?
Even if we had a couple of feet from, even 24 inches from where the bumper is, like the captain said, has really hit the end of where those spaces are, just to give us something.
Well, no, I'm just thinking of, anytime you pull into a parking spot in a supermarket, best-case scenario is you make that swing exactly perfect if it's a really tight spot. And I'm thinking, you know, obviously, you're coming in fast, you're trying to get there as fast as you can, and you might know it's fault, but you're not going to be perfect.
Exactly.
So, that's what I'm worried about when you're saying, yeah.
Yeah.
Because that would super tight.
How many parking spaces is it?
Did you count?
No, how many parking spaces would we have to get rid of? Six, maybe, to get them in there safely?
So, they shrunk these spots here, again, we just haven't seen the new analysis for that, see if that solved the problem or not. So, we're just waiting for that new analysis, and then we just have to figure out the turn here and turn there. I'm not sure if taking away parking spots would work, because it would have to be, it may just be moving the curbs a little bit, and then just try to widen stuff out, I mean, it's, I think the engineers have to look at it, try to figure it out.
Does that frontage, that open garden area there, the courtyard, does that concern you with ladder operations?
We have the reach, we have 100-foot aerial, so we have the reach. Our concern with some of the plantings, again, the issues coming on down the line, trees are our enemies. If we're trying to throw our aerial, the tree's in the way, that's going to slow its way down. We either have to take the tree down or work around it. It reduces the amount we call sweep, about the area that we can cover with our ladder truck. Trees get in our way, we've had house fires where we're not able to throw our ladder because of either utility poles or because of trees. We had a big discussion at the fire station on that, we actually showed them the tower truck. We're not talking large trees, we're talking six feet.
Yep.
An object of six feet, it's enough that it's going to affect the swing of that ladder coming out of the bed of the truck, to be able to go up, to extend out toward that building, anywhere in those courtyard areas or anything like that. Those trees, even if they're low, and they're going to grow over time, as the captain said, they're going to completely inhibit what we're able to do with that aerial truck. The aerial truck's long enough, that's not the issue, but it's going to be in the way. We can't even get it out.
It'd be cutting trees down when you get into.
Yeah. Which is why you set them down.
Right, exactly. I've seen guys, they cut these holes, but it takes a long time to get a fire going.
I give you a copy of the vehicle analysis, if you want to see that.
Thank you for pointing that out. I just was mainly worried about, it sounded like you were going to go further into the property and make your turn, and possible modifications to compact parking spots and so on. I was worried that you were going to try to turn shorter with the pond areas, so thank you for addressing that, and thank you for your quick presentation there. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just had a few questions based on the April 14th, the description of changes from Alan and Major. So, this does not show angled parking spots, but the plan does show, so these are where the, these are where the angled parking spots are?
Yeah, that's a change that has to follow.
And then, where is, it says relocation expansion of the dog park area to the remote parking lot. I don't see that on either the real plan or this PowerPoint. I don't see a dog park anywhere.
So, if you re-break, so it's.
Oh, so.
Across the street.
It's that tiny little spot right there? Okay.
Can you show us a little more?
Okay, so it's right there.
Okay. We relocated into the field across the street, across the Monahan Crossing to us. It's about 700 square feet, so it's a good, healthy size. And I think.
I have St. Bernard.
Probably familiar, but.
I have a St. Bernard.
Oh, no, it's a dog farm.
As you well aware, the senior center is right here, the town right here, less, point one miles away, is a public dog barn.
No, no, I only meant I couldn't see it.
Sure, sure. I'm just saying there's an alternative as well.
Yeah, you're not required.
A bigger dog playing experience.
You're not required. And then, you said that there was a monument sign off of Summer Street. I just wasn't sure where that sign would be. I'm assuming it's near Monahan Crossing somewhere. It's not shown on any plan.
So, if I may, it is, the plans that you were referring to that was submitted, the sign is here, it is inboard of the Summer Street line, it was actually set behind the sidewalk.
But is it shown on the plan set that we received? I couldn't find it on any of the plans.
The monument entry sign is right there.
Oh, it says it right there, I'm sorry. That was my bad, sorry.
Well, you're looking at the one.
Well, no, I looked at it earlier.
Take over.
And I did review it, I highlighted it, you can see. And that would be it, Mr. Chairman, for my questions regarding, regarding the changes. And then, the only other question that I had, which I might have missed from earlier, which I apologize for, is that I just didn't know if Sean was okay with the snow storage areas in the islands. You were good with all the snow, okay.
Where is it, the snow storage? Is it on the map?
So, it is not on this map, sir? It is on the plan set that is out. Anywhere, I'll point here, excuse me.
It shows it on the islands.
It's anywhere that it's shaded, we have it documented, so we are using our islands, our backup parking spaces, along the Monahan Crossing roadway, where we've eliminated the parallel spaces. I apologize that I'm one on one here, but it is on the plan, sir.
So, is it that green spot right there, too?
So, Monahan Crossing, the snow storage will be along this roadway, again, the elimination of the parking spaces here has afforded that opportunity. And then, we will use our green space around the site, the islands, the green space to the western building B will be used as snow storage. We have a snow storage area adjacent to the MBTA parking lot on the northerly side. We don't have snow storage here adjacent to wetlands, I know that was a point of conversation, we obviously avoid wetlands.
Where's that, where's that going to drain? Is that going to drain towards the street of, what is the street, below it?
Progress.
We're talking about putting the snow in here, is it going this way?
So, this, it is, so this slope here is going in the westerly direction, which is towards the property line, towards Progress Street. But this natural gray, which is unaltered, actually flows in this direction, creates this wetland system that gets picked up to the municipal drainage through here. And that was one of the conversations that the neighbor had mentioned, and Sean did a great job, outlining that the drainage along here is captured, so that way the flooding towards Progress Street is eliminated in our system's internal control to runoff from the buildings and the parking lot.
Do we all agree that this still works, this system up here? Do we agree that? I mean, people live on the street, does this system still work?
I don't doubt that. That's not for, you turned down on Summer Street there, right?
Well, I'm talking about down here, I mean, you're getting water from up in here, does this system still work? That's the question I was just asking. If anyone lives by here, I mean, how much water do you get?
Brianna Monigan, 88 Progress Street, you just pointed where's that going, pointing was happening towards my yard.
Yep.
That was my concern. I've had limited water trouble, I've lived here for three years, limited water trouble, but, I mean, with, you know, just all the snowstorms we've had, and if that is the primary, you know, that big area for snow storage is, you know, right behind that tree line, and especially if, I'm not sure what the plans are for any barriers between the tree line and that grassy area, or if there is any, but I just see that, you know, I mean, it's got to be created to get up four stories, so I just see that draining straight into my backyard, at which point I will have trouble with water in the basement.
So, just real clear, there's about 20 feet that they're planning to leave undisturbed. That sort of gradually transition, that slopes gradually from Progress Street towards the site. So, if you can visualize, they're going to have a slope coming down, there's another slope coming down, where they meet is where the water's going to run. Now, there's not enough storage for every snowfall, every storm event that we have. You know, there's going to be times where they're going to have to move snow off the site.
Yeah, and that's what we had with the other, the other 40B, that we, that was part of the agreement, that they remove snow.
And what we look for is, you know, Phil's done this in the past to me, where he like calls out four spots that are the size of a parking spot and says, oh, we'll just truck the rest off-site. So, what we, what we look for is, is it practically achievable? And I think they've met that standard. They've got, they've got a lot more space now with the changes they've made to sort of provide suitable transition area where they can remove the snow from the street comfortably so that the fire trucks can get through. They have enough space to work that when it starts accumulating, they have a method, they have, they have an opportunity to get rid of it.
My only concern is that you're taking all this out, all this woodlands and the mosh and everything, and the wetlands and all this stuff, and you have that section right over here that right now captures water. When you take all this out, and this gets overflow, I mean, what do the people down here do now? And that's, you know.
Yeah.
It's a serious question. You're taking out all this, all this right here, the old greens, it's going.
Right.
You have a system that works with the natural environment.
Yep.
By taking all this out, how do we know this system right here is not going to be affected?
That's what the analysis is supposed to demonstrate, and what you're not seeing in the picture here is that, as a replacement for all of that lost woodland and open space, they have these pretty massive, I mean, almost this entire parking lot, or two-thirds of this parking lot is an underground vault that infiltrates stormwater. A good portion of this, this parking lot here is, again, an underground vault that infiltrates stormwater, so these are.
So, in theory, this should stop any problems from happening?
It should prevent any, it should prevent any negative impacts from the changes that the site is making.
It just seems like a, you know, a piece of property that's protected, you know, works with that system. Obviously, they, when they put in the MBTA, they had to come up with some system here or over here.
Right.
By doing that many years ago, I would imagine, but it just, it just, you just want to make sure it's going to be good for the neighbors and make sure it works properly. Who's going to monitor the system? Who does that after it's done?
Well, the drainage system is part of the town's MS4 system, so the town will be.
Responsible for it?
Responsible for maintaining the system that this site discharges to. So, there's, there's a drain line that runs, there's, I think, three 36-inch pipes that run into the railroad track, flows through the pond, then it flows under Monahan's Crossing, and then in a drain line that can just down the street. The project is now doing all their infiltration, so the vast majority of their storms are going to just infiltrate in the ground, not ever going to get to the drainage system. When we get a big storm, it exceeds the capacity of the systems and it overflows to the drainage system, but at rates that match or are below the current conditions.
That's, that's the theory, okay.
Pretty confident in it.
All right. Is there any, you know, I keep asking questions about snow removal, but I was kind of wondering, is there any standard that other communities have put in place as to when they have to start moving the snow off-site?
When the designated areas are to, when they fill up.
So we can't have them put 50 feet of snow in that one green area, correct? And that should be monitored.
Because, well, that also, in that one area, well, that really wouldn't impact any sightlines, right?
No. What I would recommend is, I think the most stress is going to be on that line of no disturbance. Like, if there's going to be a line that moves in actuality, it's going to be that no disturbance line. So in any decision, what I would suggest is that, given the importance of that buffer zone, that we assign some level of importance to that limit of work. And then if we simply write a decision that says your snow storage can't go beyond the tree line or something like that, I think that provides them still a pretty robust space because they've got some square footage there. I would say don't underestimate the square footage they picked up along Monahan Crossings. And they've got it all around the outside. So there's not a whole lot of like extensive parking, open parking fields. It's pretty linear, so there's almost like, say, I'd say about 30 square feet of space per parking space of snow storage. So there's, it's pretty good coverage, at least enough for them to be able to manage it. I don't, I don't, I don't think they were there at the last, so the last plan, I don't think they could have said that. There was just no conceivable way that they could have, with all that parking and all that complication, I don't think there was a conceivable way that they could have done it. Now I'm very comfortable that they can.
I just have a question again on the snow removal of snow storage, something that you presented, some of the places to locate the snows on either side of Monahan Way. You're not suggesting that we removed all of the parallel parking to replace that with snow, or is that going to be beyond, because really curb to curb should be clear. I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
Yeah, Chief, we're clear. Curb to curb is clear. The snow would go up on top of the curb, on the grass, back of shoulder, like you would any roadway in the town.
Thank you, I just want to make sure.
Through the chair. And similarly, anything that's prescribed as a lane of travel for the fire truck, that has to be kept clear all the time.
And what about the sidewalks?
So if I may, through the chair to answer the question, in our response letter that we submitted with the revised plan, we endeavored to answer the question that was posed at the last meeting that we were, where Shaun laid it out quite well. Again, the snow storage was marginal on the prior plan. The removal of the parallel spaces offered more opportunity with reconfiguration. So what we've endeavored to do in that latest letter from us, from Allen and Major, is lay out what the snow removal plan is. Snow removal plan, again, that same tiered system that I alluded to at the last meeting, we need to clear the roadways. Monahan Crossing gets cleared, that's coordinated with MBTA. The parking lots get cleared because of fire access and emergency standards. Secondarily is clearing of the sidewalks, which is done by onsite ops, clear the sidewalks. And then it would be clearing of the parking spaces, the snow created by the residents of this project. So it happens in stages, not all instantaneously, but that's how we would organize that. And then if we reach capacity at any point along there, then that triggers the remove off-site situation that we're all describing.
Okay. Anybody else? If not, we can go to, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just one question. Is all of the wooded area gone, or is that strip of green on the westwardly side?
Here?
Yeah. Is that still wooded?
Correct.
Because if that, you keep like the mature trees that are in that section, and that's 20 feet?
This entire section is 50 feet to the pavement, is 50, from the boundary line to the pavement. Right, but I get through the chair to answer the question. It is 50 feet from the edge of our pavement to the property line. We are creating some slope. So this is about 30 feet of the natural buffer here at the tightest point, but as you can see, it tapers in with that we actually get back to the 50, almost the 50 feet as you get to the northerly point. I apologize, I don't know which home is yours.
No, I don't, I don't.
Oh, okay.
On Progress, I live on Walnut. But still, I just, you know, was wondering if you're leaving any of the wooded sections.
So what you see is the, I guess, the faded green color consistent with the rest of the image, that is the tree.
That's the tree.
Tree area to remain.
And you said that there's going to be trash in that corner down there? Like, how close is that? Is there a house?
So that, so there is a trash recycling center here, and again, that's 50 feet off of the property line. And then I would guess that those twin homes that are there, I would guess it probably 60 or so feet onto the far side. So I would say 100 feet.
But it's all contained anyway.
But it's all contained.
So we're not going to look out there that and see the kind of stuff?
We would anticipate that.
You plan on fencing it in, right?
Correct, yes. It is an enclosure, but it is also buffered with the natural tree canopy or the growth that's out there.
Yep, thank you.
Apologize for direct.
That's fine. Anybody else? All right, if not, now we're going to turn to you, Cliff.
These are the turning rooms. I appreciate some of the points that were in response to my letter. So I'll start in a very general stance. I think you know that the drawings are not, they're not advanced drawings, they're very schematic, the architectural drawings. And accordingly, I don't really go into great detail about the plans of the building, the architecture of the building. That's because there's not a lot of information there. There are a couple of points that I make in the report related to number of elevators, for example. Some architectural issues that would have to be resolved during the further development of the plans. More importantly, at this stage of a project, I look at the bigger issues, both from impact issues, impact to the neighborhood, how the building would fit in the existing pattern of development in the neighborhood, which is a critical thing for everybody to really understand, to see if the development is going to fit. As probably most important, and I can't see, excuse me, I can't see who's there tonight, but I assume, I've heard a couple of the Progress Street neighbors. They're clearly the most impacted by the development. So looking at impact is a big part of what I can do at this stage of the development, given how far the drawings have advanced. But I do think another really important aspect is imagining the quality of life for the residents of the development. It is a large project of a scale, you know, kind of a mini neighborhood, given the density that surrounds it. So understanding what life within the development would be like, I think, is critical. And obviously, you want a development to be a desirable place to live, and which is the best assurance of its long-term sustainability is that people want to be there. So I think that, from the big perspective, I think it's obvious to everybody that this building is far greater in scale than anything nearby. That's very clear. There are a couple of buildings just within a half mile or so that have a similar footprint, but they're much smaller. It's a supermarket, it's a Target store. So there are some large footprint buildings, but there isn't one that has this kind of volume, certainly not residential structure. The nearest, the largest, and it's not that huge, is the Wood Lawn Development, which is a very different idea that does take a number of buildings, smaller scale. I think those are all three-story buildings, and they are surrounded with a lot of exterior amenities and landscaping. So I think that the big issues for me on this kind of boiled down to thinking about what I've described, thinking about impact and quality of life. I think that a building of this, or a large building on this site, because of the relative isolation of it, and clearly because of its adjacency to the transit node, one would expect to see a bigger building here that seems appropriate, and it is the way of the world in recent years, for sure. However, I think that the issues I'm having are twofold. The biggest one, in my opinion, is actually the, more on the quality of life side, that I think it's unusual for development of this scale with just one unit. And given the bedroom mix, it does, you know, unit mix that leaves something like 150, 151 bedrooms that could be occupied by children. And I think the amount of open space and usable outdoor space, for a couple of reasons, it's really surprisingly small, given this development and where this development is. Because within a walkable distance, there really is very little usable outdoor space. So even though there are walkways, so I think I classified the site as reasonably pedestrian-friendly, there are walkways that people can walk around, but unfortunately, there's not a lot of usable outdoor space. So if somebody wants to get outside with their children, there's not a whole lot you can do. So I think that's my biggest issue for a development of this scale. There are associated issues with the tightness of the fit. It really does limit the amount of buffering. So even for the residents themselves, when you have 93 parking, many of the units with cars parked directly facing the units, there's headlight intrusion, people are lowered out of the building, really are forced to keep their blinds closed a good percentage of the time. So they really don't, don't really benefit that much from exposure on the exposed elevations of their building. Similarly, buffering from, and I'm, on the Progress Street side, I specifically bring that up, I think there are something like seven, seven buildings along Progress Street. And while there is some tree, there are some trees on the subject site that will be retained. The grains are being significantly changed. You know that it actually could rise up significantly higher than it was. I don't really know the nature of the landscaping that's proposed to be left in place, what it's made up of, if it's primarily deciduous or a mixture of evergreens and deciduous. And I didn't really, I didn't see a tree protection plan that really gives, that gives me the tools to really understand what the impact of this building will be from the neighbors' homes on Progress Street. And to me, that is a documentation issue. I think that we need to understand that, because I don't, and I'm trained to look at these drawings and really try to understand the impact from what has been submitted. I don't think it's possible to really give the neighbors on Progress Street, or the board, or other concerned citizens, an accurate sense of what that, what life will be like for those residents after this project. I do think that there's plenty of space, you know, from the primary street, and enough space to buffer it, that is proposed in the plans, even though there is a parking lot on the, I guess that's the south, southwest corner. But still, that seems reasonable. It's not as if it's built in that far from the street, it seems reasonable to me. I would also say that where there aren't usable outdoor spaces, particularly in the worst courtyard, where it's surrounded by units, you know, four stories high, I think it's packed too tightly, and I think having grilling space and fire pits in a semi-enclosed space like that courtyard is not really a compatible use, given how close it is to the building. I kind of jumped to where I landed with this, was actually inspired by the direction that was taken between this set of drawings and the previous set of drawings, which was creating the ability to have more buffering and usable door space, which was making two buildings instead of three. And I posited that this development would benefit from one building instead of two buildings. And furthermore, I think the, if you look at the design of the buildings, it is, they're both four stories, and they have sloped roofs that are, there's, with some mechanical wells in them, but sloped roofs that are on very big buildings. And my position is that if you did consider concentrating even further, going from two buildings to one building, I would suggest a five-story flat roof would be acceptable in the, and actually would make a lower building than the four-story with sloped roofs. And I know this, I know this firm, Architecture Firm, very well, and they do many, many four, five, and six-story flat roof buildings that are very attractive. So I think if you buy into the idea that the building can be different, and that there is buffering possible, then I would argue that a flat-roofed building is as appropriate as a sloped roof building, which, given the scale of this building, it doesn't really relate to the neighborhood scale, which are very small buildings with steeply sloped roofs, they're one and a half, two and a half story buildings. I would argue that there are many benefits to pursuing that course. In that case, it would open up the western side of the intermediate street. Obviously, some parking would have to move over there, but it would provide the opportunity for additional buffering for the Progress Street neighbors, and provides, in my opinion, much-needed outdoor space that could provide active, really active programming, as opposed to very passive programming that's proposed for the two courtyards. A couple other important details, I think, that are missing, or at least one really big one, is that the building elevations aren't annotated for what material they are. That's very common request to understand, are these clad in vinyl? Is this a 450-foot-long vinyl clad building, or what is it clad in? I think those are important for the board to understand, and certainly for the neighborhood to understand. I'm happy to hear there is some bike storage. We don't know how much bike storage they propose. EV parking, I'm not aware that it's detailed. I know there is a TDM that was outlined in the original traffic report prepared by the proponent. You can see SDB spaces, but we don't know how many spaces. I'm also curious what the proposal is for site-wide accessibility and accessibility within the buildings, whether the intention is to meet code minimums, or whether there is rationale for increasing it, or a goal to increase, to enhance accessibility, environment, car sharing is another option that I don't think we spoke about. One final point that I think is important, this is a very long elevation, close to tracks, very close to tracks. I did suggest that they applicant undertake an acoustical and vibration study. There are HUD standards that need to be met. And I would argue that, I think they would apply to this project, or at least I think the board needs to hear an opinion about this. Certainly, all the developments.
Certainly, all the developments my firm has done along railroad tracks include acoustical studies, because there are some relatively affordable enhancements that can be made to really get the sound levels within units down to reasonable levels. I'll make one last pitch for the two, one building over two buildings. There are, there is a very good chance that you would lose units by pursuing that approach. But I think you know, the large building, I think, has something like 42 apartments on each of its floors. The smaller building has, are fewer than that, so that actually it's, you do lose units, but surprisingly few with complete elimination of that smaller building and adding another floor.
I would even say that if that were a really big issue, there is potential for expanding[856.99]